It was like we're flying through it, but we started early.
I looked at that clock and I said, really?
We started at five thirty.
Well, time changes.
How much time?
Oh, you saw him, saw him, but not much. We used to start at seven for the most part, we moved it up to six thirty.
I got to, I don't remember this, I haven't gone either five thirty. Did I sleep one night?
What? Yeah, it was. Uh, well, we talked about it a little bit at that last one, that we was gonna do it.
I was surprised. I think, um.
I think they approved it on the, the meeting.
We did.
Shannon was out. Yeah. So, but he said it got, uh, approved, the meeting that I missed, that, that's what it's called. I know we talked about making sure we're here early for this one. Danny, you ready? Okay, I'll let you lead us.
All right. Good evening, everyone, welcome to round two, council meeting for this evening. Thank you for taking some extra time tonight. We thought we would do visioning a little bit different this year. And for those of you who are still new to the board, we've been doing it a little bit different every year, trying to figure out what works best for everyone between work schedules, workload, how much time to invest in this activity. So this evening, what we're gonna do is talk a little bit about, the visioning process itself, where we hope to be, the purpose of all this. And I passed out before you, before you got here this afternoon, a calendar for budget events coming up, which we'll go over in just a moment. Sue's gonna go over a quick financial update, just to give you a status of where we stand as of February twenty eighth. And then we'll go over the American Rescue Plan Act funding and the categories that we discussed last fall, where that stands and the next steps. And then I thought we'd wrap up with some permitting updates. We've got Mike here to go over a few projects that I know I get questions about when I go to a chamber events and things like that. So I thought it'll be good for everyone to just be brought up to speed. And so without further ado, we'll just go ahead and jump in. And the first thing that I want to mention is that visioning is really an opportunity for us to talk a little bit more informally. Obviously tonight, we're still set up in the normal format, but in the morning, it's set up a little bit more workshop style. We do have an agenda, we're not married to that agenda, it can change, things can be modified. We have lunch tomorrow at eleven scheduled, which is probably the only hard deadline we have, if you will. We will be giving you some updates on where we, where things are this year, and then we'll talk about what we're looking at for the upcoming year in terms of what we've identified as at the staff level, project, excuse me, capital needs. And then we also have time set aside for just brainstorming and open discussion. That it's time for you all to, to do just that, give us your ideas, ask questions, anything that, that's been burning in your, in your mind that you want to get out. So again, tonight, we're starting our visioning process. The April thirteenth is the dead, is when we will be presenting to you any applications that we receive for the American Rescue Plan Act funding. That is the hundred thousand dollars that was earmarked last fall for nonprofits. I'll get into that, but those specifics in a moment, but that's the date that we will be presenting those to you. On April twenty seventh of this year, you will be hearing from the various nonprofits that you typically see. Partnership for Economic Development, AgHC, Smell Start, any of those folks are gonna be requesting funding. On May eleventh, we'll be presenting the budget message and full budget presentation that, that you saw last year. We do have tentatively scheduled on May fifteenth, which is a Monday, a work session, if council desires that extra time, we've got it already plugged in. We don't need to do that, but it is there if council would like to have that extra time. On May twenty fifth, we want to specifically talk about the capital improvement plan and the status of those projects, what we want to look at moving forward. On June eighth, we're looking to have your public hearing and then adopt the budget, if councils in, in a position to do that at that point. We do have another meeting scheduled in June, should we need it, and then of course, July first is the deadline for the budget adoption, which is a statutory requirement. There's a little bit more detailed calendar that I provided to, to staff that includes some internal dates that are again statutory driven in terms of departmental and capital needs. But we've worked those, those due dates ahead of where they are required per the statutes. So I'm gonna hand it over to Sue for just a moment to give you an, an update on finances as of the end of the month, February. And then any, any questions you might have for that, and then I'll talk a little bit more about the revaluation that we just are occurring in the process of going through, so Sue, I'm gonna hand it over to you. No, don't worry about it.
Okay. I've been saying this all year, we're in really good shape, we're still in very good shape. The, um, your budget for the year before that budget amendment was five, five million, six hundred seventeen thousand, five hundred and ten dollars. Our total expenditures through February twenty eighth were four million, one oh seven, one oh one, which is seventy-three percent of your budget. Once we made the budget amendment, it's seventy-one percent of your budget, which is exactly where you expect to be at the end of February. You hope to be at the end of March, either seventy-five percent or lower. And then your revenues are, were at five million, ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and twenty-three dollars, which was ninety percent of your budget. So that means your revenues are coming in stronger than, than we expected, which is always a good thing. We have several funds with the town, um, which you don't always hear about. Two capital project fund, I'm sorry, two capital reserve funds, one for town hall and one for the park, for a total of four hundred and twenty-five thousand. Your capital project fund for the shelter, um, reservation restroom building is still open. The, um, of the five hundred thousand dollar budget, we, we have currently spent four hundred eighty-six thousand. Now that, that means we've not posted that check that you guys were talking about earlier. So, um, of what you approved as a budget, this is separate from the contract. If you pay that check, you'll have just over six thousand dollars remaining in that project. And I think there might be a few little incidentals that'll get charged against that. Your fines and forfeitures fund is at eight thousand, twenty dollars. That's money that, again, the state and the general accounting standard board has required that we set up a separate fund for any penalties that get paid. This mostly represents tax penalty, um, and then we have to pay that to the school board. And then right now, um, because as we earn or wash the ARPA money, um, we are moving it, um, into our jet, into our, um, fund balance. So you currently have a million, three forty-nine, eight thirty-six, um, of funds that have not been spent, more or less. I mean, it's not, you've not spent any of it, but it's washed. Revenue replaced is the term. So, um, fund balance analysis, the most important thing, I mean, it's all the same categories we, we visit every quarter. The most important thing is that your total uncommitted fund balance is just over three million dollars. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Sue?
One quick one, is the capital reserves of town park or the town hall and the park, is that fifty fifty?
Essentially.
It's very close, very close.
All right, let me just take another moment to give an update on, is that TV working or is it? I'm sorry. The, we've talked a little bit about the tax, we'll be talking a lot about the tax revaluation this year, and that work is complete at the county level. And as the, as the county, um, completes projections, we, we, we see those about once a month. We saw our first ones early in February, uh, which I sent to you, which showed the real property increase about fifty-one percent. The following week, we received these amended numbers, um, which brought the total increase to forty-four point nine eight percent. So still a significant increase, just not as high as it, as it was the week prior. So these will continue to be refined as we get closer and closer to the budget presentation, as is the normal case, um, each year when we're preparing the budget. These values will be effective as part of the twenty twenty-three billing cycle, which those bills will go out, uh, late summer this year. So far, again, this is as a, as a February twenty eighth, there have been a hundred and thirty-two appeals for property in Mills River, seventy-two of those have been completed, which represents roughly a six hundred and forty-five thousand dollar loss in tax revenue. That loss on paper, of course, we haven't seen the final numbers yet, there are still sixty appeals pending.
Oh, just like, yes.
Explain that, you said a six hundred, I'm like, you mean in the valuation, or you said in loss?
Well, loss is not really the, the best way to think about it, it's, if we were gonna be getting a hundred dollars of revenue off of the revaluation, now we're gonna, now we'd be getting ninety dollars, so it's.
I guess I'm at, my question is, accounting has shared information with you that they have reduced somebody's appeal. They've reduced it by, and it's came in at six hundred something thousand dollars for, for the evaluation of the property in town Mills River.
It's, it's the revenue that we would get off of those valuations.
That much of that was, not that much tax, but that much land value.
Evaluation, that's what I'm saying, yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Sorry, I interrupted.
That's, that's all right, I was done with that slide. So the next thing that, that we're actively working on right now is what's called a revenue neutral calculation, you've heard me talk about this a little bit. Each time that there is a revaluation completed, each authority or each jurisdiction needs to present a revenue neutral calculation. And there are three steps for that, and I'll just read these for the benefit of those who, um, might be curious. Is the first thing you do is determine a rate that you would produce revenues equal to those produced for the current fiscal year. So if we brought in a thousand dollars in revenue off of our tax rate for this year, and the value goes up, what's that rate need to go down to to equal a thousand dollars for the current year? And then the, then you increase the rate by a growth factor equal to the average annual percentage increase in the tax base due to improvements since the last general evaluation. Now that is what you would see each year, um, through new home construction and renovations, remodels, people buying new boats or what have you, it's all coming into the town. And then you adjust the rate for any annexations or de-annexations, mergers or similar events, but we don't, we don't have any of those. Our annual growth factor, in case you're curious, since the last cycle has been six point nine five percent. So in other words, each year, the tax base has gone up on average, six point nine five percent. So one of the things that we need to look at in terms of our revenue neutral rate, which would eventually translate into the rate that you decide to set for your, your budget, is you have to publish the revenue neutral rate, you don't have to adopt that rate. Most people, most jurisdictions don't adopt that rate. One thing to consider is the impact to the sales tax calculation, as Sue has been working with the Department of Revenue, to basically produce numbers that we can look at as best as available data will allow. A portion of our sales tax that we receive is generated based off of our tax rate. So if that goes up or down, it would increase the collections up or down accordingly. We're working through that formula to try to give you some idea of what that would actually mean, it's not a significant number, but it is, it is worth considering. And the last point I'll make on that is that all that's currently under review, we're working on that right now. One of the variables in that is the tax rate that the county is gonna set for the Mills River Fire District. Right now, that's eleven cents, the town's rate is eight cents for a total of nineteen cents. Depending upon, it doesn't affect our rate, um, the town's rate per se, if they go up or down, but the revenue neutral number would reflect, if they go up or down, um, what the overall value would be, would be. So instead of it being nineteen cents, it would be something less than that. I know it's a lot of detail and a lot of tax information, but I just wanted to give you that quick sort of summary update of where things stand, any questions on that at this point?
You said it goes up six point nine percent every year. So is that included or excluded the forty-one percent that it went this year?
That number, that growth number is from the last revaluation to this year, if you look at each year combined and then average those.
Between, between the evaluations. You see what I'm saying, so about three or four years ago, when they did it, that six point nine has been the increase.
In between the
Yes.
For three years and then starts over.
Exactly, that's right.
Yeah, so in case you're wondering, the first year following the last revale, which was done in two thousand nineteen, for the twenty twenty billing cycle, was it went up by six point seven one percent, then seven point two four percent, then six point nine one percent, so you average those and you get six point nine five percent for the last three cycles.
If, I know it's too early to give me a number, but if, if it was, uh, budget season, what do you think the increase to the town potentially would be at that forty-one percent? Have you just run that number? The increase in revenues from that, or is it gonna, it's gonna affect the sales tax, we really don't know how that's gonna affect either, correct?
Well, the sales taxes is based on, in part, the town's tax rate, total, the total tax rate. I've not done the math on that forty-one percent. I don't want to offer a number on that, but I, I could, I could have some rough numbers by tomorrow.
Okay, that's fine, so would it, would the, the tax rate include the fire department whenever the sales tax, uh, calculation is done? That includes the fire departments, eleven cents, and the town's, that's right. So do you have any idea, you said a minute ago, how many outstanding appeals are left in the town of Mills River?
As of, as of February twenty eighth, there were sixty left.
Can you get an understanding, Randy, some of these will get way more confusing and not as easy to get through as far as the seventy-two. Seventy-two could have simply been something that's just misprinted number, a digit slid over or something, I've talked to them out there, some people, you know, as soon as they see it, they, yep, exactly, that was that mistake.
So seventy-two is equal to six hundred and thirty thousand dollars.
Forty-five thousand.
And a reduction of the rate or the valuations in town over. So I wouldn't think sixty more
It's not gonna be
Was gonna be, would equal that, or would you?
I wouldn't say it won't equal that, cause it depends on the, the size of those appeals, or for example.
We're just trying to get in the ballpark.
Right, absolutely. Yep.
So we're looking at maybe a million and a half at the outside, the, the evaluation of Mill River.
I really don't, don't want to answer that because, and I'll, I'll explain why. In two thousand nineteen, there was an appeal that was filed by a large manufacturer in town, and their value was sixteen million dollars, cause they appraised value of the land. And they appealed, they've appealed that to the county, and then ultimately appealed to the state board, so there's local appeal, and then it goes up to the state. And due to COVID restrictions and delays, that decision wasn't rendered until May of, of twenty twenty-two. And it reduced their value from sixteen million to about ten million. So that was a significant impact to the town's tax base. In, in the grand scheme of things, it was not a large change, but, um, yeah, that so I don't want, I don't want to venture to guess yet on those remaining sixty. All right, so Sue gave you update on some of the numbers, and I'll just talk a little bit about what's happened since your, um, since our workshop last fall. So for the benefit of those who, who are watching or listening, the town was originally awarded two point three million dollars. A hundred and forty-five of that has been committed and or spent with through, um, contributions to the fire department and the Mills River Farm Market. Uh, last November, we had a workshop and used, using the round numbers of two point two million. The council decided to earmark these in two phases, in phase one being one point one million, a hundred thousand to nonprofit support, half a million to land acquisition, and half a million to land preservation. Which remain, which there, means there is a remaining balance of one point one million available for categorizing. And we had talked last fall about waiting to see where these nonprofit requests go, and then evaluating either the end of this coming summer, or really next fall, that second half of, of funding. Just as a reminder, as revenue replacement, we are going to meet our deadline for having these funds spent. The original deadline was having them obligated by December thirty-one of twenty twenty-four, and spent by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-six. As we're doing revenue replacement each month, your payroll and benefits, we'll have that number reached, um, by about the end of March next year. So we're, we're ahead of schedule on that. On the, the request for proposals for nonprofits, we actually published that on February twenty-fourth, and we sent it directly to several of the nonprofits that we have spoken to over the last several months, Merlek, for example, uh, one of the community centers has re, had reached out, the farm market. So we published it on the town's website, and we, we sent it to those folks directly. And then we issued a press release recently for that. Next Thursday, we're having a pre-submitting meeting. This is not something that we're requiring people to attend, but we're encouraging anyone who's interested to come and attend that meeting, because it will give them the opportunity to ask us questions about the group that they represent, uh, do they qualify, what will they have to present? We don't want anyone to be wasting their time on something if the organization clearly does not qualify for these funding, for these funds. And then applications for those will be due April third. Once we have them all in the in-house, we'll have a number of folks, and I'm, I'm hoping that a couple of you all will volunteer to be on this review committee, to review each of the proposals, and then make recommendations back to the full board at the April, your first April meeting. And again, as a reminder, this is a ninety-ten match, was what was discussed last year, meaning if, uh, a nonprofit requests, uh, ten thousand dollars, the town would cover nine thousand, and the nonprofit, uh, would cover that last thousand. Or a partner agency, you know, if they had someone that was willing to go in with them on their project, uh, they could cover that, it doesn't have to be the nonprofit specifically. But all that would be worked out in the agreement, so we have this proposal. And then, uh, once funding is awarded, we'll have a, we'll have an agreement, just like we would need to do when we get the grant from the state for the, for the sidewalk improvements, we'll have a grant agreement that outlines responsibilities, reimbursement schedules, those sorts of things. So that stuff is in the works, uh, we don't have any applications pending yet, but again, I wouldn't expect them until, until at least after next Thursday, when we have this informational meeting. Any questions on that?
Are you just giving us an overview of what we're gonna discuss tomorrow, or you want, is this open for discussion?
This is, these are just some quick updates on some things that we've talked about. Absolutely, and there's time to go over all this stuff in more detail tomorrow, as much as you would, as much as you would like. This is just some things that we've kind of talked about informally the last couple of months, I just want to make sure everyone is up to speed on. So now I've, I've asked Mike to come and give you some updates on some of the bigger projects, again, I, I go to chamber events and other events on, uh, representing the town and get questions about some of the dirt that's being moved, and so I'm gonna hand it over to Mike to run through a couple of the, the key projects that you've, you've probably heard of and probably have seen, so Mike, please.
Sure, thank you. So we've all heard of the Legacy Project, um, that is on a one hundred and eleven acre property currently divided into two parcels off of Jeffers Road. As you can see, kind of sandwiched between the farm subdivision and Hollow Brook. Five ninety-four Jeffers Road is the actual address. So that was approved way back in two thousand eight with a special use permit. They did, and I think they requested an extension, but they installed buildings on the front of the property for their offices. So as long as you pull a building permit and begin some type of development of the site, uh, the special use permit expiration date is basically null and void, so. Currently, the development is proposed for four hundred and fifty-six total dwelling units, and that's split them on single-family detached homes, attached townhomes, and then apartments in the central mid-rise buildings. There's four central mid-rise buildings, uh, one of the conditions of the special use permit is they're all capped out at seventy-six feet total height. The actual breakdown is there's seventy-six dwelling units in single-family detached homes, seventy-two dwelling units in attached townhomes, two hundred and twenty-eight apartment units in the central buildings, and then eighty skilled nursing and assisted living units in the central buildings. We did receive the zoning permit application for phase one, they're gonna be developing it in two phases. So the first phase will include two of the central buildings, so half of them, and then basically about half of the, uh, dwellings that are not in the central buildings. So that zoning permit was submitted November twenty-eighth of last year, staff did a review and sent, uh, a preliminary review memo, because of our number of details missing from the plans. The special, special use permit from oh eight has a number of conditions, and basically, looking through all that, there was some information that was still needed. So again, staff review memo went out December eighth of last year, and we've been awaiting revised plans since then. I did want to call out one of the conditions of the permit, uh, especially with the height of the buildings and the size of the site and the development is that Mills River Fire and Rescue have an opportunity to review those plans with us. Um, I'm gonna be waiting for the more detailed plans to come in, um, before involving the chief in that process, so we're still waiting on that one. Uh, you can go to the next one, so the Mills River Town Homes is what they're calling them on Jeffers Road, it's a thirty-seven acre property. Address is twenty-two fifty-three Jeffers Road, that's, this was approved with a special use permit, March twenty-fourth of last year. And it's a hundred and forty-eight dwelling units in total among attached townhomes. They are a single-family look and scale, so they're not, it's not apartment buildings, they're basically single-family homes, but they're attached two to four to one building. The zoning permit application for that was submitted in August of last year. Staff sent the review in September, and then we got revised plans back in November, as you remember, there were a couple of conditions as part of this special use permit as well. So made sure all those were addressed, and then they sent back revised plans that were compliant with everything, and we issued the zoning permit in November sixteen of twenty-two. And then as I've been updating you, construction and site work started in January of this year. They've begun more field dirt operations, all the sediment erosion controls are in place, and so that's one. Again, we're gonna be keeping an eye on, uh, just to keep up with the development of the site. Uh, with all the construction activity, I'll just say again, and for any of the public listening, if you have issues with congestion or management of, uh, construction vehicles on Jeffers Road, please just give our office a call, and we have a straight line to the developer, and he's assured me he'll take care of any issues. So our newest brewery in town, so Appalachian Mountain Brewery at forty-six North Mills River Road. So this was the renovation of an existing twenty-five hundred square foot building, and then they did a nine hundred square foot addition at the rear of the building, so they could have a full kitchen and a walk-in cooler. So they could have full food service. The zoning permit for that was issued June twenty-ninth of last year. I've, I've just heard they're gonna open later this spring, might be in the next month, um, I haven't received an update from them. But the staff did do the final zoning inspection, the CO was released, and I think they're just doing final finishes. They did just apply for their ABC permit as well, so that's something they're, they're still working through. And then recently, we've been getting a lot of calls, what's going on next to the fire department? So it's fifty-two sixty Boylston Highway on a twelve and a half acre site, and we have, uh, B and F ceramics. They are a flooring and tile wholesaler importer distributor, uh, based out of Virginia. This is gonna be a total of a hundred and twelve thousand, five hundred square foot building, and it's broken up into a couple of different sections. So a little under seventy thousand square feet of it is gonna be for B and F ceramics themselves, and that's where they're gonna have their warehousing, distribution, wholesale operations. There's, that's also gonna include a, a retail showroom and some office space as well. Then they have, and it's, it, it will look like one Then they have, and it's, it, it will look like one building, but it's broken up into a couple, uh, different uh, spaces inside. So one of them is a twenty two thousand five hundred square foot spec warehouse space in the same building. Then they have a fifteen thousand five hundred, uh, fifteen thousand five hundred square foot spec warehouse space as well, and then a seven thousand square foot, uh, Boylston Highway facing retail space. And then a few other projects I just wanted to run through, um, again, just to illustrate kind of the development that's going on. We have the Party Outpatient Surgery Center that you all have seen, um, that's received its CO, that's fifteen thousand square feet. There's a commercial remodel of a seventeen thousand five hundred square foot building in sight on Old Fanning Bridge Road for a future vehicle dealership. Uh, all about plumbing on Old Haywood Road is doing a site expansion and a new six thousand square foot building at the back of their site. Mills River Self Storage is adding, uh, some additional storage buildings to their existing central and northern sites, and then is, uh, has submitted a zoning permit, and the variance is coming toward the Board of Adjustment next week for their new south facility, uh, near the county line. Um, and that new facility is proposing about forty three thousand square feet of self-storage buildings. We have James River Equipment, which to my knowledge has not broken ground yet, um, on the old Fanning or Fanning Bridge Extension, sorry, Fanning Fields Extension. That's a thirty thousand square foot building and then fifteen thousand square foot, uh, building as well, new commercial site equipment dealer. We have Thor'sland Concrete renovating the old Moore Dairy Farm property. There's a six thousand square foot building going in there, uh, and then they're renovating the existing structures. Summit Storage is completing the buildout of four additional self-storage buildings at the rear of their property at Old Haywood and Boylston Highway. Um, I don't know if anyone's driven past Brickyard Road, but a Coney Bell, the tiny home park has about finished their phase three buildout of twenty additional tiny home spaces, and I think they're just starting to move units on there. Obviously, there was the Asheville Airport Air Traffic Control Tower and Radar Facility. The town permitted. We've had a number of cell tower co-locations and upgrading of equipment over the last year. Um, I just received the zoning permit today. Hill's Machinery is adding a fourth building to their site on Old Haywood Road. And then also in the last year, we had a hundred and twenty thousand square foot building, uh, warehousing building in Broad Point, uh, right at the corner of Old Fanning Bridge and, uh, Broad Point Drive. Zips Car Wash is coming to Ingles. And then just a quick thing on subdivisions. It's been a little slower just because where we are, um, with a couple of subdivisions, we're kind of in between. Um, but we have the cottages at Roper Farm, or I think it's called the reserves at Roper Farm on Banner Farm Road. That's thirty two houses, and then across the street, the reserves at Wintercrest, which is eight, so about forty new houses on Banner Farm Road. Those are not built out yet. Um, and then Mills River crossing Phase Three, which has been building out, that's the south side of Boylston Highway over the last year, that's forty five total houses. And then construction continues on new homes in the farm at Mills River. So again, next to where the legacy is going to be, uh, there's about seventy total lots there. I don't have an estimate of how many are built out, but there's a good five plus homes under construction there at all time. And then briefly, uh, just wanted to cover permit numbers. So right now, we're on track, uh, with last year, uh, where we were in early March. Um, but really, the last two years, we've been just over two hundred permits total, uh, in the year, and I would expect we'd probably, uh, reach that again this year. And then code enforcement. So obviously, uh, but before we had the planning technician position, code enforcement was not going to, was being addressed basically haphazardly as staff time permitted, which allow, did not allow for property case management. So I just wanted to report since January, since we've hired the new planning technician, uh, we've received eleven complaints, and we now have the the Smart Gov, uh, portal online, so citizens can now go online to submit complaints, and we have been receiving them um, as well as submitting permits online, and we've been receiving those as well. So eleven complaints since January. We've done nineteen code enforcement letters. We've closed seven cases and done forty three unique site visits. That's all I have.
Okay. Any questions for Michael? Michael, when they come in and pull a permit for a building, you know, zoning permit, they don't really give you a, um, price value like we have to put on at the county level, do they?
That's correct.
Okay.
Anything else? Are you interested in seeing those numbers?
Would I like to see those numbers? I don't know. Might be interesting. I don't know if that was something that we could potentially another way of tracking growth, and it would just be, but those numbers could be flawed though, you know?
I did, I did a similar thing in my last position for that very reason. We, we just have people fill out estimated project value, and it it's not going to be as accurate as your building permits.
Right.
But it would give you some idea of what's happening in the town.
Yeah. That'll be about it.
We'll look at the soft Marco software and see if we can figure out how to plug it in.
Okay.
Any other questions that you guys get in the public generally about development or code enforcement that we did not go over today that you'd like answered?
Well, naturally, with code enforcement now, I get a lot of phone calls wanting me to see if I can get some pressure off of them. But as you well know, how many times have I called? Zero. I told them that it was implemented for a reason, and they could work through it, and we was, uh, still the town of Mills River, and we would work with them any way we could. But these, uh, policies and procedures and ordinances was put in place for a reason to protect all, and we finally got somebody to help us enforce that.
And I'll just echo that. I mean, we, and I've taught Kevin this as well, our new planning technician. We're not out to find people. We're not out to get people. Um, as long as someone is making a reasonable effort to comply or showing effort to clean up their property, whatever the violation may be, we're going to give you an extension. But if you're not, we do have to follow the rules.
Right.
Just like everyone.
I, I potentially see a need maybe for some elderly folks that might get hit at some point. I would like to see if council would entertain, you know, somehow setting aside some money to help those that's in a situation that can't help themselves with these items like cleanup, trash removal or such, or if there's any groups or, you know, that might be willing to help them out. Uh, I've actually took on one little project myself, just because. Not naming no name. Anybody else got anything? It's, uh, okay.
That is all I had, had planned to discuss this evening. We have more we can go through if you want. We've been here for a couple of hours now. Or we can come back in the morning and pick up. You, you tell me what you want to do.
Do you feel like, uh, does the group feel like we'll be here four hours, three hours, six hours? What do you, what do you feel like we'll be tomorrow? Just asking. And I'll give you a legitimate reason. I done asked Daniel. I projected we'd be out of here by three or before, just because I got to go pay my employees and a couple subcontractors tomorrow, about five. That's the only reason I ask.
I anticipate going through, uh, at least the, uh, items that we had on our agenda by noon, and then just leave the afternoon open for brainstorming, discussion, questions, that sort of thing.
Okay.
Um, but it could go quicker or longer.
My suggestion to council is if you've got any, any of those brainstorming questions that you think might be coming tomorrow, if you could open up with them tonight in case there's information that needs to be collected that they may could get before the time arises tomorrow afternoon. I don't have anything that I know of.
So I did have one thing, Daniel, uh, that we decided back in November to set aside five hundred thousand dollars of our ARPA funds for farm preservation. So I would like for us to at least discuss for a few minutes about setting up a, uh, a committee to think about what that's going to look like.
Mm-hmm.
So they can bring it to council. Uh, because there's going to have to be guidelines on that money. And we, if we use a third party for that purpose, uh, they're going to have to know what we expect from that money. Uh, so I'd like, you know, and I'm just thinking out loud, maybe we could set up a, a committee to meet four or five times. I don't know that it would take that many times. I'd like to see at least two council members and, and probably two from the ag committee and maybe two from the plan board. And maybe, uh, an at-large, uh, person to be on that committee to give, uh, guidance for how we might spend that money. Or at least guidance for rules to bring to this board so we can implement. Does that make any sense?
Anything else? If that's all, I would entertain a motion to, if we need to be, to reconvene tomorrow at nine o'clock, the same meeting.
Is it?
Recession.
Um, one thing I might ask y'all to look at is the work session for May fifteenth. I won't be available that late.
If that's it, well, you need that in a motion to recess, sit till tomorrow, correct?
Needs to be a motion to recess, um, till nine AM, uh, March tenth.
I'll make a motion that we recess tomorrow until nine AM, March tenth.
Thank you, Randy. Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Are you opposed? We'll be back here in the morning.